And in fiscal year twenty-two, our one hundredth day ADM was nine hundred and seventy point nine. Current, um, well, last fiscal year, twenty-three, one hundredth day ADM was one hundred, I'm sorry, one thousand eight point five. And in fiscal year twenty-four, we're projecting the one hundredth day ADM will be, um, one thousand and ten. And this is a conservative estimate of the last four years. And if our enrollment increases or decreases, we will have to adjust the budget accordingly. Next slide, please. On line two A, page seven of the district, um, budget, additional assistance, DDA. Funding is projected to be fully funded with no cuts for fiscal year twenty-four. Line eight C of page seven, we are projecting that we will have a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar carryover. Um, while last year we had a three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, um, thousand dollar carryover. And this was due to ADM actuals. Line ten of page seven is additional funding due to a Prop one-two-three lawsuit. And we are projecting we will receive seventy thousand dollars. And we will continue to, um, continue using, using the existing distribution formula. ADE will notify districts of the final amounts. Line twelve of page seven is our fiscal year twenty-four general budget limit. Ten million, two hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight. This amount is further detailed on page one and is also included on the cover sheet. Page two of the budget is self-explanatory. Line one and nine on page two equal line twenty-four on page one. The audit services expenditures is listed along with the food service expenditures budgeted in M and O. As stated on the budget, the food services expenditures budgeted in M and O are used to determine districts' compliance with state matching requirements. Next slide. We do not set aside or receive funds for capital or bond buildings, new school facilities, or adjacent ways on pages four or five. The district utilizes impact aid funds for all capital purchases and uses one hundred percent of state equalization to fund the detailed salaries, benefits, and expenditures listed on page one of the budget. The salaries and benefits are seventy-three percent of the total M and O budget on page one. Page six of the budget lists all the projected expenditures for federal and state projects on the left side of page one. I estimated grant funding would remain close to fiscal year twenty-three, but will update the actual funding when the director of federal and state grants receives the information for the new year and make any necessary adjustments. Instructional improvement fund zero twenty is gaming revenues. Um, fifty percent of the funds are required to be, to be set aside and used for special purposes. All teachers are paid a minimal amount, three hundred dollars, included on their teacher contracts. And the district is currently funding a point-five FTE per professional from the fifty percent set aside for the specific purpose to develop minimum reading skills for students by the end of the third grade. All and, all other funds are listed on the right side of the page, page six. There are several funds listed that we are not able to use, but continue to be listed since they are still funds available from prior years. Most of these funds are cash-controlled funds, which means the district is only able to spend the cash balance amount. There is no activity to report on the supplemental page and summary pages one to two compiles all the expenditure data from M and O on page one and from all funds on page two. We do not have a property tax rate and the consequent pages that are data entry and calculations required to build the budget. Are there any questions on the budget? And I think it probably helped for everybody. I know you guys are, are early for student of the month, so you get to hear all the budget excitement. But the budget is, um, what the district uses um, to fund salaries, um, anything that we need to use for the schools, um, transportation, all of that fun stuff. So we compile all this, looking back at years, um, to make sure we're using the right amount for each department. Um, and I don't know, Erin, if you want to pull up the Excel sheet that is the budget. Will kind of make sense. I'm sorry, yes.
I have a question, um, you know, at one time we had, um, reserve funds. Is that, where, where is that listed on the budget?
The reserve funds from what funding?
Uh, reserve.
For.
Uh, I know, I know, there, uh, Dr. Morrison, uh, when you were superintendent, we had some reserve funds. What happened to that money?
In the impacted or in the, for what funding?
I think it was like two hundred some thousand dollars.
It might have been a, so the budget that we have is a total of all monies. And then we also, um, do like the department budgets and that is that maybe what she had had. I would have to see what she had set aside before, because I don't know. Um, but we do use the same items that we have. And I'd have to know what funding she set aside from, because I know we have to maximize our M and O budget. So if I'm assuming it was impact aid, we still do have, we, we still are in fiscal year twenty-four going to have reserves put away. I think we, um, we settled on four million that we want to set aside in reserves of, from impact aid.
And if you allow me to add, um, based on the projection that we have on the next three years' projection, um, we noticed that if we continue to have the same spending patterns, we noticed that we, we needed to change our habits. Um, a lot of the funding that was coming in, it was used a- also to make a lot of renovations in the schools. Um, but nevertheless, we made it a point that in the next three years, we will be setting aside as part of the reserves a minimum of four million dollars. With a, uh, ending goal in mind of two million dollars at the end of the year.
So this is a public meeting, or at least a public hearing, so I don't know if there are any questions that maybe you have burning for the, uh, chief financial officer, anything you have questions to. What dollars are spent by the schools, where are they spent? Um, was that a community meeting on Saturday and one of the questions that always comes up, so might be good to hear is, what actual supplies does the school actually provide and pay for? For a regular school classroom? Can you kind of dive into that a little bit?
I feel like everything. Yeah, I, um, I'm not aware of any out-of-pocket expenses for the teachers. I could be wrong and I, I probably am. But, um, we are, and I know that are the principals and office managers are, um, always asking, you know, what the staff needs for the school year. We try to be prepared for that at the beginning of the school year. And as the year goes on and things come up, um, we get, um, requests for all types of purchases, um, field trips. Um, if they're doing special projects, we get, um, um, requisitions or requests in for those supplies. So I've seen everything, you know, papers and pencils, crayons, um, down to, you know, hand sanitizer for the classrooms. Um, I, I, we pretty much have, are able to purchase all items needed for the school year.
Are there any other questions?
Just a comment, President Mudiya, and additional information for the parents. Um, the constitutional right of a student is that they're supposed to have adequate and free education, uh, access to a free and adequate education. Uh, being public education, we are required to provide all the supplies. But at the same time, the, the funding, the, it, it, it is received each year specifically for supplies. It's always very minimum. Um, I also have my principals, one, two, three, two and a half of my principal. Um, two principals and a former principal, of four principal. Um, that can speak out, um, a- about what are some of the supplies that they order, um, to address a question in the public, uh, meeting. Um, do I have a volunteer, Ms. Enriquez? Please join us.
So, um, what I've been instructed by Jose and Christina is that if it supports any type of instructional need that students need, that we're able to justify that. Like she said, if, if my teachers have special projects, I can think of one during winter where they were in math class and they were using measurement and fractions and whatnot for, and they built gingerbread houses. So the district purchased the items that they needed for that. We, like she said, pencils, crayons, paper, notebooks, um, pencil boxes. Anything the teacher usually typically asks me for, I put in a requisition and it's always approved. Um, and then for auditing purposes, we just have to provide a justification on what instructional use it's going to have in the classroom.
Mr. Fox, did you want to add anything?
I, I think she covered it.
And I know it sounds, I mean, I know we hear it a lot, but I think it's always a revolving question when it comes to community members. You know, what do you, what, what does the school supply? And I'll always try to be as informative as possible to say, anything they need.
Sometimes I think what is question is maybe sports, athletic stuff, um, for clubs. Um, it has to stay with the school, um, for us to be able to use auxiliary. Um, the student clubs usually pay for stuff that they want to stay with the students, that the students might keep. Um, if they're going to do jerseys, I mean, or, you know, practice shirts or something that they want to have with their names on them, then the student clubs usually pay for that stuff and it's something that the school, um, typically does not pay for because it doesn't stay with the school because it's personalized or, um, items that they would use. Um, there are certain items that we can buy, like helmets and such that do get used. Um, but that keep, you know, that stays with the school. Um, but items like, it's harder with, and we find funding, um, or grants for maybe like socks or stuff that wouldn't typically stay with the school, but all the students or athletes need those. So I think that's where it gets a little bit confusing on what we're allowed to use the school money for when it comes to athletics.
Are there any other questions, anything else anyone can think of? Go ahead.
I, I feel like maybe she didn't ask for that to be provided, because that would have been provided. But if we are giving prior notice and we are not able to provide that, um, item as soon as they need it and they can get it faster, they can put in a request to be reimbursed ahead of time. But with our purchasing guidelines, it has to be done prior, um, to them doing the purchase. That is good information to know, but yeah, it, we, we would have, um, provided for that. I don't know if it may, was maybe during COVID. Yeah, and m- maybe they were not available to come in and print because, um, district office during COVID were still in the building. Um, we had to get payroll done and, and get, make sure that requisitions or purchases for the sites did get done. Um, so it should have.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Diaz.
It was a great question and I want to thank you for your question. Um, I, I, I have to admit that I still yet to meet a teacher that will not spend their own check on things for the classroom. It, it, they will just go out of their hands, because even things that are, or items above and beyond, um, their, their teachers will do it and, and, and teachers have a great heart. Um, also to be able to take advantage of the funding available. It requires a lot of planning and ahead of time. Uh, last-minute items, it will be very difficult, uh, to make it happen. And sometimes, um, that may end up in the teacher's, but I really want to do this and they may have to buy those items. But, um, I, I, if I had one wish in this world is the teachers that will not spend a little money that they make back into the classroom, um, because they don't make enough, they will never make enough. Um, but definitely, I want to thank my teachers that they go above and beyond. And I thank you for that observation, because there will be many, many instances in which our teachers that will go above and beyond and use some of their funding for things that they want to do in the classroom. Thank you, President Mudiya.
And then, and again, no question, is a dumb question, these are, these are meant for you guys to be able to ask those types of things. So thank you so much for the question. Anything from the board? Anything else from the audience? Anything else, Ms. Ravago?
That's it for me.
All right. If that's it, then we'll go ahead and, um, adjourn the public hearing. Without objection, I motion to, to adjourn. Is there a second? Uh, Ms. Kathy Vans?
All those in favor of the motion, Juan Buendia?
Mosapo.
Sylvia Hendricks?
Mosapo.
Alama Grieswood?
Aye.
Kathleen Vance?
We've got about maybe three or four minutes before we'll enter into our regular meeting, just to give everybody who was supposed to be here a chance to get here. There are seats up front, don't worry, you guys, there's. For example, uh, number, oh, sorry, letter D is our routine business this evening. Number one is the approval of the July eleven, twenty twenty-three board meeting. Uh, governing board, with your, um, permission, I would like to amend tonight's agenda. Letter G, under consent agenda, I'm asking to pull number seven and add it to the action items, which is the approval of consultant item. Is there anything else for the agenda? If not, if that's my motion to amend.
Are you making the motion to approve it and that, with that change?
Yes.
That would make it action item number five?
Correct.
I just want to, I just want to clarify that we're only taking out the consultant.
Just the consultant.
Okay.
I believe, unless there's anything else.
He's pulling the consultant par to action item number five. And that's the motion. Anything else?
I have a second to the, a motion to amend the agenda this evening to, um, add action item five, which is the approval of consultant, which will delete item seven out of consent agenda, letter G. Mr. Zabala?
All those in favor, Juan Buendia?
Mosapo.
Sylvia Hendricks?
Mosapo.
Alama Grieswood?
Aye.
Kathleen Vance? Motion carries.
Number two, this evening is approval of the June thirteen, twenty twenty-three special board meeting minutes. Without objection, I motion to approve. Sylvia Hendricks?
All those in favor, Juan Buendia?
Mosapo.
Sylvia Hendricks?
Mosapo.
Alama Grieswood?
Aye.
Kathleen Vance? Motion carries.
Number three, this evening is our call to the audience?
No, sir, there was no call to the audience.
For the record, we have no call to the audience this evening. We'll move on to letter E, information items. Number one is the students of the month for summer school, Mr. Diaz.
And it's a pleasure to, tonight, to be able to have a full house. I think this, it, we have more a full house during summer school than actually during school.
You guys can hear me, right? And I'm going to take advantage for a couple of commercials that they have all of you. The first commercial is, I want to give all of you guys, give yourself a big hand for the extra work that you guys are doing. I'm glad, I, I think I can use it.
All right. As you can see, we have a couple of items hanging up on the walls. And the first one, I want to point out, it is our goal, you are being part of success. One of our goals is that all of our students are going to be, um, score, uh, mastering seventy percent or higher on their standards. Then they're also going to be growing a minimum of twenty-five percent depending on their level. And they're going to have ninety-five, ninety percent attendance or better. And the work that you're doing is the work towards that goal. So congratulations on the work that you, that you are doing, because the reason you're here is for the extra work that you have done. Parents, thank you, thank you for instilling that love for learning and for pushing the extra hard, uh, to your students. The second one is that I want to point out is that this year we're going to be promoting, I want you to be bold, I want you to be brave, and I want you to be proud of being BUSD. The fact that you gave up your summer to be ahead of everybody else and to be able to be more prepared to start the school year, you are being brave, you are being courageous. And I, and you, you're being bold in your education. Thank you. So the last one, um, which is going to be, um, we want to make sure that, um, we are connecting. Today, we are going to be connecting to celebrate you guys, yours, uh, the students and the parents. Thank you for the work that you're doing. We are making sure that our students are learning, um, their, their, um, their standards. And this year, this summer was extremely different. Some of you hated it, some of you loved it, but there's one thing in common. You will be more prepared when the school start, school year begins. And for that, congratulations, I'm very proud of all of you. Give yourselves a hand. And at this point, may I please also, please help me welcome with a big hand to our K eight coordinator for summer school, Mr. Justin, please, to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, board members, Mr. Diaz and parents and families. My name is Justin Frago. I, during the school year, I'm the proud special ed teacher for Indian Oasis Middle and High School. Um, but I was given the unique and very honor. But I was given the unique and very honorable opportunity to serve as the K through eight summer school coordinator for the past three weeks. It really has been an honor to work with all of your children and see them literally making strides every day in their classrooms. There's a video that is going to be later in the meeting that shows their pre-tests for reading and writing, or reading and math, I'm sorry, and their post-test. And when I was putting together the video to see the growth that these children have made in three weeks is exceptional. I am here because I want to thank the parents, I want to thank the students for doing what you guys are doing to not only instill a love of learning, like Mr. Diaz said, but to encourage your student to, um, make up credits, to make up lost materials, help them understand gaps that they may not have learned during the school year. And it definitely shows not only in their scores, but in their overall attendance, participation, all of those things in their classes. I'm proud to present Students of the Month. I had every teacher send me a name of students in their class who they felt demonstrated their attendance, their hard work, their participation, and really strived to be bold, to be brave, and to be a part of BUSD. So when I call your name, um, I'd like for you to come up. I'll give you your plaque and you'll, uh, go down and shake everybody's hand. For kindergarten, Falling Star Juan. For first grade, I'd like to recognize Brielle Lopez for first grade student of the month. Second grade, I'd like to recognize Ariana Lee Leonard, second grade student of the month. So I have a few third grade graders because we had more than one class. For this one, Keyan Antonio, third grade student of the month. The next third grader, Luciano Narcho, third grade student of the month. The next third grade, Mica Jacobs, third grade student of the month. Moving on to fourth grade, Armando Pancho, fourth grade student of the month. The second fourth grade class, Virginia Francisco, fourth grade student of the month. All right, fifth grade, Rose Salvicio, fifth grade student of the month. I'm getting my steps in today, all these awesome students. Uh, sixth grade, Aleah Antonio, sixth grade student of the month. And last, but certainly not least, for middle school, Henry Condi, student of the month.
Isco Houdunik. Annie and Habchuk, Dr. Arlyn Flores Ali, the coordinator of summer school program for high school. Good evening, Mr. President Juan Buendia, governing board members, and Superintendent Ruben Diaz, community members, students, and those people who are here, good evening to all of you. I am proud to present, um, the Students of the Month for the session one. So until now, we are still ongoing, uh, for, um, session two of the summer school program. The first student of the month that was nominated by Mr. Inis is Devin Anton. I know that he's not here, he's in Phoenix. Yeah, Devin Anton.
Devin Anton, we have someone representing. Let's give him a hand.
Okay, Devin Anton was being nominated by Mr. Inis, the Mike, uh, the autumn culture teacher. Devin is from Topawa, Babu Kivari district. He is an incoming, um, senior in the school year 2023, 2024. His hobbies are running, playing basketball, and enjoying with people around him. His thought, his modern life is, uh, the Bible verse, Galatians two, verse twenty, which states that, "I've been crucified with Christ, and it is no longer I who live, but Christ lives in me, and the life which I now live in the flesh I live by faith in the Son of God, who loved me and gave himself up for me." He said this verse represents him as a Christian and the lessons and mindset of our school board and nation need to be teaching our younger generation. In the next couple of years, he plans to be done with his education and accomplish the first year of his secondary education, also achieving goals like playing college basketball or just going to college and staying on top of his studies. Congratulations, Devin Anton. Okay, Devin Ness has been nominated by Ms. Jayla Cabarratan, the world history teacher. Devin is from Nolik Village. She likes to play football and his favorite teacher is Mr. Miss. And according to him, Mr. Miss pushed him to be, to do more. Live your life to the fullest is his modern life. He wants to graduate his senior high school and vision himself to have a comfortable life and place to stay. Devin Miss won at his school during the first session of summer school. According to his teacher, he participated well in their discussions and Ms. Cabarratan was so impressed with his performance during his interview with Mr. Jeremy Miller for their project, A Veteran's Tale, articulating the questions positively. He has exemplary performance and accomplishments in their learning sessions. Congratulations, Devin Ness. We are so proud of you. Okay, Jayden Huwan has been nominated by Ms. Elizabeth Lopez, photography S one teacher. Jayden is from Nolik Village. She likes Italian food, drawing and reading is, are his favorite hobbies. She wants to go to college but is unsure of what courses to take yet. According to her photography teacher, she took great photos, understood and applied information, and has nearly perfect attendance. Congratulations, M. Kiripat. It was a pleasure for Mr. Acuna to nominate Orin Francisco for the student of the month. There are several reasons for his nomination. To begin with, Orin was a successful student in biology class. He ended up his class with a grade of ninety-eight point five percent due to his strong work ethic and discipline. He has no unexcused absences. During the class, Orin is constantly engaging with the material through the collaboration of his classmates. Furthermore, Orin is not afraid to ask for help, which is a habit that everyone should learn. He is one of the first students to welcome Mr. Acuna to his district by asking questions about the teachers such as, "What weird food combination does a teacher like?" According to Mr. Acuna, he strives every day to follow his motto, "Stay cool." He currently resides in the village of Santa Rosa. During his free time, he is a musician. He can play the guitar, bass, and accordion. Accord, along with music, his favorite teacher is the Wila band teacher, Mr. Enriquez, because he was one of who introduced Orin to the bass. Because of Mr. Enriquez, Orin is excited to explore more instruments. Orin wants to pursue a career in welding while making music in, in hopes of releasing a song in the future. Even though he wants to be remembered through his music, it is certain he will be remembered through his action and kindness. Thank you, Orin. The student of the month for summer school online credit recovery session one is Saraan Lopez. Mr. Coulson said Saraan has perfect attendance in the summer school and has competed two elective classes and earned half of the credit for attendance and participation. Sara is from the village of Komobabi and in her free time helps take care of younger siblings. Saraan also enjoys watching movies and listening to music. After graduation, Sara would like to work as a pharmacist technician with her ultimate career goal of becoming a pharmacist. We are so excited to see you, Saraan, as a pharmacist in the next couple of years. Congratulations.
That's it, Ella, unless you want to speak. So that'll conclude our Students of the Month. Thank you so much. It is always the, the, the highlight of the entire meeting. But I think foremost, you got a little bit of a taste of our, of our public hearing as well. So thank you so much for the questions. Thank you for being here. It is truly an honor and I'm very much, uh, in line with what Mr. Diaz had stated earlier that participating in summer school probably is a drag for some of you. But just think of how much further ahead you are going into the new school year. And I just can't wait to see what's going to be in store for you as you kind of move forward. So, Mr. Diaz.
Every one of us get twenty-four hours a day, every single day. The difference between a successful person and, uh, and someone that is not so successful is what we do in those twenty-four hours. Parents and students, you saw the opportunity of this summer of being present or not. What set you apart is that you took advantage of that opportunity and that you took advantage of those twenty-four hours. And for that, I'm proud of each one of you. Congratulations and thank you from the bottom of my heart. Special thanks to my summer school coordinators. Thank you for also keeping up your summers and supporting, extending our gratitude to our teachers and everybody else that, that assisted during summer school. Congratulations. Back to you, President Buendia.
Take a real quick five minute break that'll, but this'll conclude this. We want you to stay around if you'd like to, but other than that, um, we'll take a five minute break and then we'll come back.
Okay. Good evening, President Buendia, Governing Board Members, Superintendent Diaz, and BUSD staff. I'm going to present the Fiscal Year Twenty Three Student Activity and Auxiliary Balances through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. The student activity account had deposits totaling four hundred thirteen dollars and fifty cents, and disbursements totaling two thousand nine hundred eighteen dollars and fifty cents. The elementary school student council had transfers totaling four hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents from the Star Wars community sales. The intermediate student council had a transfer of a hundred and thirty-six dollars due to the placement of unclaimed funds to the elementary student council. The how, the, sorry, the class of two thousand twenty-four had a transfer of a hundred and thirty-six and dollars and fifty cents due to the placement of unclaimed funds to the elementary student council. And the high school softball um, club had a disbursement of eight hundred and ten dollars to pay for an invoice to purchase hoodies. The high school basketball team um, had a disbursement of six hundred dollars to pay for registration to the U.S. San Diego two thousand twenty-three high school team camp. The eighth grade promo account had a transfer of a hundred and thirty-six dollars due to the placement of unclaimed funds to the elementary stu-co, and disbursements totaling six hundred dollars for promotion and banquet photography services, and five hundred for the walla band to play at the promotion dinner. Finally, the high school yearbook received five dollars from picture sales. The ending balance on six thirty twenty-three was a hundred and three thousand five hundred nineteen and forty-eight cents. The student auxiliary fund had a disbursement totaling one thousand four hundred forty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. And this is for the elementary auxiliary paid an invoice from scholastic book fair sales for one thousand four hundred forty-two dollars and forty-six, seventy-six cents. The ending balance on six thirty was three thousand nine hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. Do I have any questions on um, student activities and auxiliaries?
Ms. Sylvia?
Yeah, I was just wondering about, I know that the class of twenty twenty-four were going to be used to, I mean, I guess divided up, I'm not actually, uh, class of twenty twenty-four, or twenty twenty-three?
Yes, that, it, that has to be done after, um, after we pay the transportation invoice, and that has not happened yet. So we have to see what the balance is after we have the, um, get that paid.
So you have received the invoice, or?
Um, the requisition is in queue. We're waiting to receive it back. Um, there needed to be some changes on it. There was some missing documentation that needed to be attached. So, um, we are waiting to get that to be able to, um, pay it.
And then, in regards to the other classes, older than twenty twenty-three, so the twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, they still have funding in their accounts, and my, and our understanding is that it goes to the student, I mean, yeah, student council?
Student council, yes. Sherry, um, is going to be in contact with the student council sponsor once that, once school is in session, because the, um, students need to make a motion and have meeting minutes on that transfer over. So we can't do that on our end until that meeting happens.
And they're aware of that?
Um, Sherry is going to be in contact with the student council, um, sponsor when the, the school year starts.
Because you still have money in there way back to twenty twenty-one? Okay.
So, so just kind of piggybacking off of that question, the student council will vote for class of twenty-one and twenty-two amounts to be moved into their
Yes.
To their budget?
Yes.
And then, okay. And then the only reason, I mean, do you know what the, what the total amount is that the twenty-three class is waiting for, the transportation?
I can look. Oh, for the transportation invoice?
Oh.
I'm looking at the I'm pulling up the rec now, sorry. So what we have in the system, um, that was shown, what that was sent was one thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-five cents for the driver. Um, but it was sent back because, um, the calculation was not correct. It was missing the benefits portion of the, um, pay. So that's what, um, it was sent back to be redone, but we have not received it back yet.
Where does that come from?
Payroll, well, I'm payroll gave the information to, um, transportation, who then invoiced the student club.
So transportation has it, they just haven't given it back?
It was put in by the high school, because they received the, um, invoice, but they need to get with transportation to fix the amount.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Ms. R.
Okay, I'll carry on.
Well, well, sorry, real quick, that how long has that been open?
It was let me check the approval log.
Because you said it was queued, or at least, oh no, you, and then you send it back, you know, when you send it back, I guess is what I should ask.
I'm trying to see. It was sent back on June twenty-third.
Okay.
And the rec was created on June twenty-first.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Oh, Erin left. She pulled the next item. I don't know. Sorry. I was gonna pull up the, um, expenditure budget, Benji. Financial report. Um, I'm reading that, but you can put the, um, Excel file on there. Yes, that last one. Okay. Okay, so this is the, um, fiscal year twenty-three budget expenditures as of six thirty, two thousand twenty-three. Um, attached you will find the two thousand twenty-three expenditures, expenditures through six thirty, and we will be entering the encumbrance period in fiscal year twenty-three. That allows us to continue making payments for goods and services received on or before six thirty. And also is the time for us to ensure grants are maximized and the minimal budget carry for, with the minimal budget carry forward. The M and O, um, reflects a budget balance of six hundred thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred sixteen and fifty cents, and we are twelve months into the fiscal year. I have highlighted areas in yellow where Jose, Allison, and I will have to move expenditures around to ensure we do not have any over-budget expenditures. In addition, our last payroll for the year is this week, and after the payroll is processed, we will be able to release all payroll encumbrances. Accounting, uh, accounts payables and purchasing are working hard to close all purchase orders, and once they have confirmed, all goods and services have been received and paid for. As the purchase orders are closed, this will also release any unused and covered expenses. Overall, we currently have a thirty-one point eighty-one percent or thirteen million seventy-five thousand, six hundred fifty-seven and seventy-seven cent budget balance excluding encumbrances. And we have received twenty-seven million, two hundred seventy-four thousand, one hundred sixty-two and eighty-two cents so far in fiscal year twenty-three in revenues from all funds, excluding funds um, for student activities and the insurance fund. Do I have any questions?
I have a, just a the, uh, budget for the board superintendent has a, I mean, I was just looking at everybody's percentage of budget spent.
Mm-hmm.
I think ours goes over, a little over. Is that, is there an expense that we're that we is there an expense that we should be aware of that's maybe wasn't accounted for? I'm sure, I know we've made some changes and had to do some payout and different things.
I think too, because we, um, were coming out of COVID where there wasn't at, any travel.
Okay.
And then we came into travel and there was so much more, um, that maybe it just wasn't accounted for correctly. So that is something that we're going to be looking into also. Um, but I know also Ruben was, or Superintendent Diaz was, um, going to make sure that all travel was going to be in line with the three-year plan. So that'll help us to, um, kind of, I guess, tighten the reins on the travel expenses that we've been incurring.
Wow. Okay. If you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on with our agenda, number, number three? This is four, but it's just number three, you see barbecue, barbecue school district, school principal reports, Superintendent Diaz.
President Buendia, members of the board and members of the community enjoying us at this point, please help me welcome Ms. Jennifer Enriquez to present her report, and also introduce a new format that we will be using for this next school year.
Good evening, President Buendia, Governing Board Members, Superintendent Diaz. I have presented my principal's report in writing. I hope you've had the opportunity, excuse me, to read it. Um, some of the highlights that I want to point out is, um, we have a partnership with, uh, partnership with Native Americans, that's the organization, and they are going to be providing all our primary students with school supplies to take home. So that would be in addition to what they received to use at school. Uh, our initial distribution was supposed to be July twenty-first, um, but they are a little behind, so, um, they won't be delivering our supplies till the end of July. So we'll have to update that date as to when they'll be dispersed. Um, we have some new employees joining our team, either through transfer or new hire. Uh, Brittany, Monique, and Ms. Guiones um, have been in our BUSD family, but they're coming to primary along with Damian Carlos. And then we have a new hire, Kaylee Edson and Adriana Castanada. Um, and congratulations to Mr. Miller, if you haven't seen his new EG's commercial, Google it on Instagram. He was really happy with the way it came out. Um, our welcome back information is linked. We did post it on social media yesterday. Um, we're gonna post it again at the beginning of next week, and then one more final round before our students come back. You wanna?
Erin, can you sort of?
Those are just our upcoming dates. Um, I've listed all the priorities that we discussed at our board retreat, our alignment with district goals, how we're going to do them, and then so far what we've planned for it. That, it's not really progress yet, it's just what we've been planning for the upcoming school year. Um, no data to present, obviously, and then, um, that is it?
Awesome.
Short and sweet.
Thank you, Ms. Enriquez.
You're welcome, thank you.
Ms. Enriquez, um, I don't, I don't have a question, I just wanted to make a comment that the way you have it set up, how, um, the expectations, um, where you had the, um, um,
You took us back to
where is it, uh? Uh, down, like all of this stuff, and then with the graphs right there, I mean, the, um, the stretch goals, all of this stuff right here, I really like that, because then everybody gets to see what the expectation is at the beginning of the year. And I was wondering, are these going out to like the parents or the families, so that way they could see that? Um, because I know when we have our meetings, we wish that there could be a full house all the time, and they're gonna stay and listen. But I think that this right here really, um, they should see that at some point, and, uh, because I think it's really helpful. Um, especially with the other, the older classes too, um, but I really like this part, so.
Well, I, I do want to give credit to Ms. Sudan, because she shared her template when she revised it at the end of this past school year. So that's where we got that part from, but, um, we did include all the goals in the welcome back newsletters. We're gonna make sure that we are promoting them, putting them on everything newsletters, um, posters, any type of communication home, so that way parents and guardians are aware, and it's not, you know, by the end of the year, oh, we didn't know. So we're gonna make sure that that is just everywhere.
Don't forget to use your, uh, your thirty-second commercials when you're doing your students of the month, even throwing it up. I mean, anytime they're all here, it's always, it's good to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Awesome.
Wear, wear a headband.
Thank you again, Ms. Enriquez.
President Buendia?
Yes, sir.
I also want to thank, uh, Ms. Sudan, uh, we borrow her, her template, um, we asked, uh, if we could borrow it, and we're gonna, to uniform everything that we're gonna be doing, uh, we modeled in the way she organized her board report last year. So we, we are hoping to continue to align what we do, and you'll see the template that is gonna be easier to read. They might look diff, a little bit different in each school, but nevertheless, the expectation will be that we use that template.
Ms. Bagay Lewis?
And Ms. Bagay Lewis?
Good evening, Board Members, President Buendia, and Superintendent Ruben Diaz and community. So I turned in my board report, I hope you had a chance to look at it. Um, the only thing I really want to highlight is, I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge and thank, um, the Tucson Police Department and retired Lieutenant General James Lester from the Marines Toys for Tots program, who will and TOPD for showing up to say hi and walking around with us. They got to tour both campuses, the intermediate and the primary campus. And we also put some of them into some houses. And so, um, a video will be coming up shortly, um, on Facebook. So we'll show, um, how they were put into a house, and so we want to create that partnership with them for the future, so they do have more ideas of how they can come and support our students. So there will be, uh, there'll be more information on that soon. And then, um, uh, most, let's see, a few of our students went to, I mean, staff, staff, a few of our staff went to training. Um, they went to Camp Plug and Play, Avid, and the Innovative Summit. So all our teachers are preparing for professional development from what they learned at these, um, trainings. They will be coming back and teaching our staff that didn't go, and teaching them what they learned, so that it reaches more staff and not just the ones that went to the conferences or training. So we're really excited about that, and they're getting a little nervous, but we know that they can do it. Um, and we have a lot of fun activities coming up for our parents and guardians, and attendance incentives, and that's it.
Thank you, any questions, sorry, important comments? Thank you, Ms. Bagay Lewis. Superintendent Diaz.
Yes, and thank you, President Buendia. At this point, Ms. Edna Leva, you're up. And her first official board report. Let's give her a hand.
Good evening, President Buendia, Governing Board Members, Superintendent Diaz, community members, and everyone that's here with us this evening. I have turned in my first governing, my first report. And I hope you had a chance to look at it. It's a little sparse, but I've only literally been on the job for three weeks, and we made it about what we've been doing lately. So I included the trainings that we've attended this summer, so some of the staff and myself were able to attend Avid. And then this last weekend, we went to innovative schools where there was a variety of workshops that we could attend. And we are going to be getting together when the teachers get back next week, and we're gonna talk about what are some of the things that we want to present to the rest of the staff, because there was a lot of information, and not everybody went to the same ones, so we're gonna share that information when we come back next week. And if you scroll down, um, our school, I included our school hours, and that was it. Back up a little bit. Um, so some of the things that we have going on right now, Ms. Haley returned yesterday, today, what's today, Monday? Today, I don't even know what date is. She returned today, yesterday, and has already started working on some of the scheduling, and she's also scheduling meetings with parents. We have been notifying parents via social media, robocalls, newsletters about registration, and, um, Ms. Sylvia Valdez from the primary has been a huge, um, propellant of that. And we are going to be having a couple of meetings. Tomorrow, we'll be having a meet and greet. We will be having a senior meeting, and then on Thursday, we're gonna have an athletic, um, kickoff with, uh, Coach Meese and any of the coaches that are there. And that's about it.
And, Ed, that you have, oh, then do we have the JTED plan? The JTED, um, the three-year plan?
Oh, then your, uh, superintendent's report.
The superintendent's report, well, I'm gonna defer right now to yes. If you don't, uh, we Mr. Bass, if you don't mind going into the superintendent's, uh, tab and pull out the, um, there you go, that one, if you don't mind, Edna?
Okay.
Giving an overview of where you're heading and what, what would be the next step?
So we are really excited to be moving forward with CTE, the progress that we've done at Babo Kevery. Um, so we put together this presentation to show you brief, it's just a quick synopsis of where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. So in, um, the school year twenty-one, twenty-two, we had one CTE program, and that was agri-science. Moving forward, this last school year, we added two more, automotive and culinary. This year, we are proud to add two more to that, so we will now have digital photography and digital communications. So we're going to have a total of five CTE programs. Moving on, um, in the next two years, we plan on keeping the five we have now, but we're also talking about adding some health occupations and, um, in aviation and drone operation. So, uh, you know, again, we're looking at, what are the, there are three things, we had a meeting with Mr. West. There are three things that, uh, a program needs in order to get started. The community needs, we need to know what the community needs are. We need to have student interest. And the last one, we can't do it without, we can't do it without the certified teachers. And so that's why we're going to be recruiting, um, I, I don't have all the details about it, but we are planning a recruiting with, um, I, I believe the district. And then, um, we also included for your information what the certification requirements are. And anyone who works in the industry, regardless of the industry, they need to have two hundred and forty hours of experience in that industry in order to be able to teach. So if you know anyone in the health business that would like to come out, um, we are definitely looking forward to starting those partnerships and, um, be on the lookout, because it's gonna be exciting.
Any questions?
Any questions?
So for these
Go ahead, Ms. Sylvia.
For these certified teachers, um, with the twenty-four hours of industry experience, um, what, what are you, where is the funding for that out of CTE?
Mm-hmm, it comes from, some of it comes from JTED.
Those teachers will come out of JTED.
Mm-hmm.
Have you gotten our JTED for this year, or what is the amount of that? What is it?
Ninety.
Ninety thousand.
Ninety thousand, okay.
A drop in the bucket, but as we expand, the more money will come our way.
Yep.
Well, the more, uh, yeah, the more students you get enrolled into the program, the more money you get. Or the more programs you have, the more students you get. That makes sense.
Yeah.
Me too.
I'm excited, that's, that's cool. Anything, go ahead, Ms. Vance.
So, like, these classes that we're gonna be offering, um, within there, and so they're aligned with, like, the TOCC, so they can continue their education over there in those, um, in those areas, um, like, say, the, um, we were talking about the, um,
Like the nursing?
Yeah.
Or the ones we have now?
Both. Both, because I it's really, I mean, I'm really excited to see that moving forward, that we're gonna, um, add those other things in there, other than just what we have.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it's my hopes that they'll continue, um, either at TOCC or somewhere else, that they're gonna, they're gonna continue and come back as certified whatever for the nation, like nurses, doctors, all of that, you know, it's just really exciting to, to know that that's, this is the
The direction.
steps of moving forward to those things, so.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and just
We, we also started meetings with TOCC already about some of these dual enrollments, and this is one of the items, we, we tabled it for today, because right now we're focusing on the current dual enrollment for the classes they have available, but it is something that we're going to be talking to them about and, and planning for the following school year. Because we, we want to be a partnership, and we want to make sure that all of our students are prepared, whether they're earning dual enrollment for the CTE classes, whatever that would look like, but we are definitely starting those conversations.
Go ahead, Ms. Sylvia.
Can I add in a plug?
Sure.
Well, just, just the agri-science, I'm excited about, because we do have the programs and the setups for all the farming that they're doing, you know, throughout the, the nation with the, the TOCC program. And then also for the culinary, of course, we're still working on getting that started.
Mm-hmm.
We have the, the cafe, you know, and everything which, you know, obviously, you know, we're hoping that they'll come into, you know, once we get that going. And then just recently, I know that they're, they are looking and working on CNA program
Mm-hmm.
and a pre-nursing program. So we're actually getting set up, getting ready to start that.
So the timing will be perfect.
Definitely, with the timing, it's great.
Yeah.
You're gonna start it, we're gonna start.
Mm-hmm.
They'll just automatically
And, and just to add to that, we already have, uh, Mr. Davila is already working very closely with TOCC, so that partnership has already begun as well for the agri-science.
Sweet. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Leva.
And at this point, Mr. Fox, can you please come up and present your board report?
Skatash, good evening, President Buendia, board members, Mr. Superintendent Diaz, all you nice folks. Um, June has been a, uh, it's been a fun month. Uh, the most exciting thing we've done actually is make the phone calls and contact families about the uh moving to in-person only. Um, we've had mixed reviews. Some of the parents are very happy because it's now that their students don't have an excuse to not come to school. Um, and then some of our older kids, old adult students who work and whatnot, they expressed issues. And we've run into some possible transportation, but we're giving them lots of different alternatives um and advice so that no one's ever getting the phone call. Well, we're in person, too bad. You can make it here, great, if not, whatever. They, we steer them to lots of different resources um that they can still continue to pursue their education even if it can't be with us for that reason. Our teachers are always there. They're still taking phone calls, emails, texts. And, and they're being asked advice on, well, what program should I go to? Um, so it's, it's been a, it's been good to communicate with everybody in that, in that sense. Um, I'm very excited that it's in-person only. Uh, I want to get more kids we can get in and we found that whenever they come in, they do much better. It's really that simple. Um, so that, that was our big push, uh, was just making sure that everyone is aware of that and that no one's going to be caught by surprise the first day of school and think that we didn't provide them with a place to go. Um, so for the first day of school, we've come up with, uh, we've had students kind of in and out of our campus all summer long because we've been there. They drop in, they've helped us design some um, some logos. They helped with this, the, the board that we did, a lot of that's their ideas. Um, but one of them was, I had said, guys, and it happened to have been just the guys, they said, what are some things we can do the first day to help hold you accountable to, you know, to what you're gonna do this year? And as silly as it sounds, the letter to yourself is something that, that seemed to be pretty powerful because we looked up different things and the three kids that were there that day um said, oh, the letter to yourself. And I forget the movie they referenced. You guys might know, it's about, God, the movie Hillary Swank was in it. They kept a journal, no one read it, that one. And they referenced that movie and they said, oh, this will be really neat. So, it's okay, let, let's do that. So, the letter to yourself should be pretty fun. Um, I hope they like that. And then school contract, they're gonna build. We're gonna do that in the first few days of school as a group with all the, all the young folks that are there. And they're gonna divi, design their school contract, their common goals, expectations um with knowing that they have our common goals and expectations, ninety percent attendance. Um, completion rates, I don't know if we can say seventy percent mastery, that's what we want to say. So, hopefully, completion rates will show that into um the state testing. Uh, ten a day, five minimum, those are all the non-negotiables. We're not going to change that moving forward because we've had some pretty good success. Um, but we did talk about a, a social type contract. Uh, and how we can, how I as the principal, I can help defend the contract for all. And if it's written by all, well, it, it's easier to enforce. Every student has access to our handbook, it's been updated. Um, we've given it, we've given hard copies out, only one because it's big, but everyone has uh access to it. Um, and then we just brainstormed some ways to get some more community outreach, some more parent elders, people on our, not necessarily us going to them, but we want to bring people in to us. So, movie nights and just the, the kind of fun things. Because again, I'm expecting upwards of maybe a hundred people, a hundred kids showing up to campus. Um, that's what's enrolled at this point. Um, so I think with that, with the more students, we'll get more of the community, more of the family, more of the, more of the other stakeholders in. And then lastly, um, part of the PBIS, come to find out, kids love to be TAs. They think it's outstanding. So, part of the PBIS, part of the incentives, part of the ten a day, uh, that gives them the opportunity to be a TA, not for the whole day, but for an hour a day. And what that entails is, we're gonna be strictly targeting with math. And hopefully, we're gonna have our older kids for an hour a day quote TA, so they actually, they are teaching assistants and they are teacher's assistants, um, actually working in groups with some of the younger kids. So, if they're real, if I got an Algebra II student and they want to also get an elective TA credit, hour a day, they have their group of eighth grade pre-algebra or ninth grade algebra kids. So, we're looking just to do different ways to get our, our kids speaking to each other more about the academics and less about the TikToks. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Questions, comments, concerns. Ms. Vance?
I, when I was looking at this, I really liked that letter to, to yourself in the beginning of the year. To me, that was, that's really powerful. Um, and then I also, um, 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 I guess kind of a little concerned about the, the teacher-student ratio. Um, because if there, if that expectation is like a hundred students and how, and you have three teachers plus Mr. Frago?
We have, we have
Four?
We have two teachers right now because we're replacing, we're, we're our ELA teacher. Ms. Armenta has gone up to secondary, where's she? To secondary to be their, on their credit recovery teacher.
Oh, okay.
She's been wanting to do that for a while because she knows that that's where she can get her most bang for the buck and actually give that positive influence to more students than what we have to offer her. So, I think that's very admirable and I'm very happy for her and I'm very happy for secondary. They're getting a very good teacher. So, at this point, we have two. Uh, and then we have Mr. Frago who's our ESS teacher who will, uh, he's, he's a team player. He steps into where, where it needs to go, no matter what he's stepping into, so to speak. So, um, I, we have a hundred or so enrolled. I, you know, I'm not quite sure we'll have that every day though. So, I think we have to kind of see how it goes. Because I, our teachers can easily handle, if the room can handle it, thirty-five, forty kids in the classroom because of the nature of the way we do things. Uh, they're not up there um lecturing. They're, they're moving. They're, they're, you, you guys have seen it. You see what they do. So, it's easier for them to make contact with the students. So, we could have a class of forty, forty-five. And one teacher could handle it. It would be difficult, but she could handle it or he could handle it. And then I like being in the classrooms as much as I possibly can as well.
And then I guess the concern is not only in the classroom, but when they're outside on the, on the field, um, also
Yes, and we've come into Yeah, with the field is a big one for me because it's one of the places that's hardest to monitor. But what we can do, and I think, I guess, ask for, I forget the expression, ask for forgiveness before permission. We were gonna put a lock on the gate during school hours. So, at lunch, I go, I unlock it, I escort them up because they do need places to move. If they don't have that field, they're gonna be in Mrs. Bagay Lewis's areas because we are confined. And then we keep the field open for the community after school, before school, and we'll put a nice note on there. If you need to get in there, we understand. Please text this number or come on over. But we do have to do something with, I, I think that's a reasonable um fix because it, it also, it forces me to be up there. I mean, I'm up there, I go up there all the time. The kids joke about it because I go up with the little clippers and it's like, are you spying on us? No, I'm just cleaning up. And they laugh because they know I'm spying on them. Um, but the field is an issue and then um as soon as I know it's in the works or once our bathrooms are um functioning a little bit more uh efficiently, that hopefully can take us off of Mrs. Bagay's campus pretty much for everything except for the students that Ms. Flanagan has help out in certain classes and that's very um structured. Um, yeah, it's, it's, it will see, it, it could be a tight fit. Uh, we might have kids sitting outside when the weather is nice, working out, outside on the picnic tables in the front. Um, but we'll do our best job to, to keep everybody content, happy, focused.
So
Ms. Sylvia?
I guess in line of the question that Kathy had regarding not enough teachers. So, are you, do you have qualified people that serve as aides or something?
Um, no, no, we have our three teachers plus our ESS teacher, uh, Ms. Lafferty and myself.
So, monitoring those areas that you were talking about, I'm assuming might be helpful, but you know, I don't
Um, you know, I would never say no to extra staff. Believe me, I know Ms. Bagay Lewis wouldn't because we, she's very gracious. We share, we share Ms. Larson, we share Ms., was Ms. Dillenberg, now will be Ms. Flanagan. Um, if security is needed, Alan is always, uh, I have his number, he says, just text me if you need anything. So, we've been very lucky that we do have that partnership and that camaraderie with the intermediate campus. But I guess we will have to just see how it goes. When need be, my kids step up and they do the right thing. I'm very, I'm very proud of the way they handle themselves. Um, one of the custodians at the end of the school year, we just, because our bathrooms weren't working, I just, Ms. Bagay Lewis said, let's just, like, your kids use seven hundred and that's it. That's the only ones who use them. Because when things were, when shenanigans happened, we're all spending twenty, thirty minutes looking at cameras and you still can't really tell. And I was so proud of my students. I forget the janitor's name, he's a big guy, he calls me fox catcher. And he said, your guys made my job a lot easier. The last hour of the day, I barely had anything to clean up in those seven hundred bathrooms. No vandalism, no graffiti, no um reported vaping, no paper on the ground, uh, toilets flushed and taken care of. So, I'm very proud of my students and, and my young people that go to school there. So, I think that they will step up to whatever the occasion they have to um and handle themselves in the right manner. We'll have, we'll have slip-ups, but as it says somewhere up there, failure's not final and something else. You always, you're not a failure if you learn from your mistakes.
So, I know we had a little bit of a conversation, a little bit of a and this is, has nothing to do with the report, so I won't kind of belabor it, but would like to hear or have some kind of report to the board on how are we trying to find a solution? Because this isn't like any other campus. It's, it's kind of it's a part of the district, but it's on its own. And I know that concern definitely does, you know, I mean, if you're talking about two teachers splitting fifty and fifty or a hundred kids on together
We'll find one.
Then, I mean, I understand. I know you guys will find a way, but I don't want there to be any kind of liability or something that's gonna happen because we're seeing in-person only. Um, and I know you've been, you've been saying that over and over again and I, I agree that we know that there's reasons we have to be in-person. But I also know that there was some discussions at some of the, the conferences we've had on developing manners or ways around, say, the, the educational vouchers or providing some sort of different type of service that maybe we could draw down funding as opposed to doing it in the um regular form, a way of funding. Um, but these are the things that other districts are thinking about because they aren't, they do know that it's, it's pretty substantial in the sense what they're losing because of the law. So, how do you work around the law to just kind of make sure that we're also providing some sort of a, a need that we know is there, especially for this campus in general. Regular school settings and this campus to me, that doesn't really, doesn't really not that it doesn't work because you make it work. What it does need is special attention. So, I want to give it a special attention as we can to make sure that we're, number one, supporting the students that are thriving. And number two, supporting the staff that are gonna also be kind of tasked with something that's a little bit more than anyone else. And it is because it's more so one-on-one, especially from what I've been able to observe.
And we don't, my, my teachers don't get a lunch.
Right.
They don't get a planning period. Um, they work bell to bell and they have no choice but to do so. And they do it happily because they do know that on other sites, they have it easier. They don't have to do lesson planning. They don't have to do a dog and pony show in front of everyone and, and really get their A-game on every single day. So, that they, they know there's advantages and disadvantages of, of our unique setup. Um, but I do go and break them all constantly. They, no, no one waits to use the restroom or if they're hungry, they, they get their breaks. They talk to us. Mr. Frago, when we have three teachers, he, like I said, is a team player. He's in that classroom. He's co-teaching with teachers when need be. Um, he covers classes when need be and he helps us out with breaks and everything else when need be. Um, so, I, uh, thank you. I understand and I agree with exactly what you're saying. Um, and I would love it if we could
Yeah. So, I guess that would be what I would say in the form of directive is, let's, let's try and make sure we're not letting this get too far away. And we hope we kind of feel generally the same in that at least present something that maybe we can help rather than I don't know.
You know, I've always admired the staff over there at the Accelerated Academy. So, that needs to change.
That'll be up there next time.
But, but um, I know like at the other sites, when there are, the student ratio goes over, there, there's always um that extra funding that's um those teachers get because of that ratio, that overage. And I'm really hoping that that's something that, because we don't want to burn out our teachers. I mean, they're really, really good teachers over there and they work one-on-one and I think that something like that needs to be looked at because I'm, I'm just seeing a hundred kids um there at the campus and the ratio is just, it's a lot, it's gonna be a lot until hopefully that position can be filled or, you know, we can get somebody else there. But that would be something that I would want to look into or want to um have, you know.
And I will say, if we want to be aligned with our, with our strategic goals of how many percent present or
Ninety percent.
Ninety percent attendance? Then we need to step up and be, be ready to support. How do you make that happen with this type of setting of a campus? Did you have something, Ms. Sylvia?
No.
Mr. Diaz? Ms. Sylvia?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that it, so my observation of your campus is that your culture is respect and responsibility. And that, you know, I know that you're saying, you know, you have students that would step up and all like that. But again, you know, they, they also need to learn.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, academically.
Yeah, oh, and, and I do think they do. I, I think that um the quality and rate of work that they do shows that. And looking over some of the test scores that came back, I don't know if it's a great thing, but we're right in line with the other schools and pretty much with the state. A little lower than the state, but we all are. So, I do feel that they are, they're learning more than just accountability, responsibility, and respect. They're learning a lot more than that. Those are just underlying core values of how humans treat each other. So, I'm very confident that our kids are picking up very, very good skills. And I think we'll see our eighth graders that go back to secondary. I'm hoping that they, and they got the pep talk, I'm hoping that they, they show their stuff and they show what we're made out of. Um, the, the ninth graders that are going back up there that have, that have met the requirements, I'm sure hoping they do good because the few, the few we've had gone up there, I've sat here and seen Supo be student of the month. I've seen Precious Anton be stu, student of the month twice. Those were our kids. So, we, we, uh, we refurbished them and sent them right back.
Mr. Diaz?
President Buendia, members of the board, um, definitely, first of all, I want to thank um Mr. Fox for, and his staff for the work that they've been doing. They have demonstrated that they are serving a need that we have here in the community. So, for that, I want to be very grateful. Um, at the same time, um, Mr. Fox and Ms. Leva, they're currently collaborating and they have met as to then how are they going to also have the system in place of how to keep the students at the high school um to prevent that overload, uh, to start with. But we will definitely look at other possibilities, uh, keeping in mind, how do we continue to serve the need that we have here in the community for a very successful program? We'll be happy to do that and report back to the board.
All right, thank you. Thank you, sir.
You're good. Thank you guys very much.
Okay, well, that will move on with our agenda to the barbecue and high school, the governing board member reports. It's to Ms. Sylvia for submitting her
Look at the emoji.
Yeah, I know, I like it.
The emoji.
It's like you. Um, do you want to go ahead?
No, no, I just, you guys got my report. I don't know if anybody has any questions. Basically, you know, yes.
I don't have any questions. Go ahead, Diaz.
I just have a comment and this is for the community. Um, in terms of, um, there have been some questions about how, how does the governing board know um how to make decisions? And I want to highlight in Ms. Hendry's report, how active the governing board is. The amount of activities that our governing board's members um actually do. Um, and this is only uh, well, two months. Um, and this is only, uh, well, two months out of the year, highlighting all of the events that are taking place for our position that you're not getting paid. Uh, but all, the, the only pay that you get is the satisfaction that you're making the best, um, that you know of to leave this place a much better place. And continue to help us be the best, uh, version of ourselves. So to say that, I wanna thank you for, uh, taking the time, the energy and, and highlighting how active our governing board is. You're only one of all of the governing board members, uh, but also, um, they'll be able to see through our, my video. Um, everything else our, our governing board do to support our principals, teachers and our staff. Thank you, Ms. Hendry.
Oh, just, yes, well, just because I forgot we have an audience out there. But, um, just, I just, uh. In my board report, I just, uh, listed all the things that, and the majority of what I listed was what we did in June. Itself and really like May, I mean, in June, we, uh, actually attended the NCI. Where a presentation was done by the, by superintendent, two board members, a principal and a, um. Language teacher. And that was very outstanding, even though we didn't have a great crowd. But we had many questions, great questions from other, other areas of, of Arizona and, and throughout the United States. From different, uh, nations. Um, and then on due, on then, uh, we also attended our leadership, uh, conference. Um, um, in the, uh, part of the, right after the NCI where like I went to work one day and then the next day we're off to the leadership conference. Uh, uh, that is held in a very cool place, Wax staff of Arizona. And so, um, there was, um, some highlights on that was that the conference, um. Uh, keynote speaker was a gentleman, um. I don't think I put his name down. Oh, what was his name?
Cook.
Oh, Mr. Frank Kitchen. Yeah, and he gave a presentation in which, uh. The title of the presentation was Build Your Recipe With Leadership Success. And which he shared a method that related to, uh, being, uh, learning how to be a leader, uh, with the recipe. And that was really, um, interesting and different that I thought, uh, was another tool that for myself. To learn, you know, how to continue doing the work that we do here. Um, also. The conference also, we also have, they also do fun, fun activities in. So after, in the, in the, after the conference time, you know, when we're attending these sessions. They had a, uh, salsa making contest. And, uh, this Miss, uh, Frank Kitchen, um, actually conducted that. Um, he had recipes of students, of student, students that made recipe, salsa ma- recipes. And he handed them out and, and Kathy Benz from our board. Was teamed up with a, one of our friends from, uh, the Page Unified School District and. We were timed and they quickly cut up everything, put everything together. And actually, we, we as audience were able to taste all that, but they had a, they had judges, which I didn't agree with, but. But, um, uh, but we tasted all the salsas that everybody made throughout that. So some were hot, but were really hot. But it was, it was fun. And then we also attended our, our Hispanic and Native American Indian caucus. And, uh, which was conducted, uh, by our esteemed, uh, bor- uh, board president. Who also is, as Sir says, our, the president for that caucus. And, uh, he, um, I really enjoyed that he, I really appreciated that he presented her with a shell necklace. Because, um, Dr. Sheila Harris Williams is the executive director, but she actually has been, has retired since. And this was her last conference that she attended and we're so glad that she was there. We actually spent a lot of time with her, you know, with farewells and whatnot. And then, uh, of course, last but least, we, that what also is conducted at the summer leadership is, is our, is our county meetings. And just sharing amongst, uh, different, uh, schools within our, within Pima County. And coming up with ideas and asking questions and giving their, you know, our viewpoints of what we do here and they share what they do. And it, it's real, um, uh, it's a learning, it's a learning experience. Also then during this month, I also attended, um, Etna Labus, um, community forum that was held on June twelfth. Um, and it was also, um, virtually done also. And, uh, she gave a pre- great presentation on her, her, um, her leadership, her goals and, and what. And answered, answered questions that we had in regards to, I think one of the questions that I had was schedules. Why aren't we getting schedules earlier? We should be getting schedules for our students during the summer or at the end of the school year of the, the year that they finish. Uh, one school year or so. And, and I think that used to be done in the past, but, um, things have changed. Um, then I also attended a, uh, the tw- uh, a, a class of twenty twenty-four, uh, parent meeting. On the fourteenth, uh, great discussion regarding, uh, requirements of. To be able to go on the trip. And so I think we shared a lot of our, our thoughts. And which kind of, um, I think kind of gave them a more, um. Um, cause they had many questions about why are you making these decisions? But, you know, the decisions that we make are always in the best interest of our students and the best interest of our community. And so I know Kathy shared some good thoughts in the, in that and, um. And gave a great presentation to them and, and so, and, and superintendent, you know. Went down the breakdown, you know, of what, what, where, where they're at and where they could be at, you know? And so it was, it was a good, good meeting. Um, the other thing that I attended was the, oh, and I, and our summer retreat was excellent. I think because we shared our day together with the superintendent going through, you know, the, the, the goals and the. Plans, our next three-year plans. And then the next day, we're, I'm really happy and was glad to see all our principals. And, and administrators during their presentations and what their plans look like. That actually fit in with what our goals were looking for. So, um, that was, that was a good, um, retreat. And then the last thing I think was that I traveled with, with Juan and, 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 um, and, uh. Superintendent Diaz, um, he, we introduced him to the district of San Lucy. And I don't know if you know where San Lucy is. Jennifer does, that's where she's from.
Fears ringing because we were talking about.
They say hello.
It is way on the other side of, way past Aho, almost, you know, before you get to Yuma. Well, not that far, but almost there.
You're not in Kansas anymore for sure.
Yeah, and, uh, we introduced, uh, Ruben, uh, Juan introduced him. We introduced ourselves. And also, um, um, superintendent gave a presentation on our three-year plan. And they had many questions and I think we might get some students from San Lucy.
Yeah.
Um, because, uh, but you know, one, in one particular question I thought in which would probably come from many, uh, from the other districts. And that on the west end is our lang- our, um.
Dialect.
Our dialects. And because we do teach autumn, you know, and we're teaching the language. But the, the big question was about is, are we, how are we presenting them? Are we presenting them the different dialects? Which, you know, I, I'm not sure we, I don't think we had a, an answer for, but. You know, I think that, um, that's something that I think maybe the language program should maybe kind of not work on. But, you know, I think, you know, basically it's the same, it's just the dialects are a little bit different, but we know what they're saying. So, but, that was one of the questions. Um, and I think that was it. So, and I look forward to July. We're in July right now and. We have many things going on and we're gonna be attending and, and, um, and throughout the year. And again, I very much appreciate the work you all do and we are here to support. You and all our, our students. Thank you. Got a big old little happy face with thumbs up.
Thank you, Ms. Sylvia.
Just, I really appreciate, um. We had met at the, the, um, for the board retreat and it was Father's Day. So for all the, 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 you know, Father's Day weekend of all, for all the men that were there that, you know, took the time to. Away from their families to be with us and, and then, um, you know, your moms, my, the moms and, and, uh. That were there too, that they also took time to, to be away from their families to be with us. So I really appreciate that, you know. Um, that was kind of like one of the only weekends that where we could all gather. So it happened to fall on that weekend. Um, so just wanna really appreciate, uh, say, um, thank you for, for taking the time. Um, I really liked that, the retreat that we had because what we done is we. We went over the, we went over the, the three-year goals and we really took time to understand. Where we're at and where we need to go and, and that we continue on that path instead of. Um, you know, finding a new goal or something like that. We just, we're staying on that path. And I really think that that's gonna be one of our strengths is that if we just continue moving forward with that same plan. And I love that plan because it's, it, there's just so much thoughts that went into it. And, and our kids are gonna benefit, you know, it's, it, it may not seem like, um, now. But the future is, it's gonna be. It's for them. And where they're gonna go from here is really what matters. And so the time that's taken for us as not only board members and, 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 um. Staff, but, um, the directors, but everybody working together that our children are gonna benefit. So I'm, I'm really glad that we continue to move forward and that with the plan. Um, I did get a, uh, the opportunity to go to the, um, the intermediate school. When the Tucson Police Department, um, did come over and, and, and give the, the boxes. Uh, boxes and boxes of, of gifts for the, for the students. So I, I really, um, appreciate that and, and the collaboration and, and looking forward to continuing that. So that was really something. The, the only, the only other thing, um, that I had attended within this, um, bef-. Within this time was, um, Ms. Laba's, uh, meet and greet. Um, and that's when we had it here. And, um, you know, it was, it was nice to hear, um. That you have a plan moving forward and that you're, you know, I really want everyone to support. You and your efforts moving forward and, and the changes that are gonna happen. I really, I really believe that. You know, it's, it's gonna be a good thing for us. Uh, and so I'm really thankful that you stepped up and you are making that move forward. So, thank you for that.
Go ahead, Ella, do you have anything?
I found my notes on the, um, board retreats, uh, given report. On the first day, we, um, talked about, um, clear the land and. Uh, the information that, um, we talked about on that and the, and. And, um, um, I'll just skip around on, on this reported, but, um, that, on the, um. Advocating for our students, um, we talk about, uh, we want to, when our students who read and write. How well we are prepared for our children. And when we look at the results, we ask our, our report. Uh, uh, give our respect to our children. And, um, and then what are we actually doing? Accountability. We continue to climb the ladder and look at our behavior, you know, what structures are important and. And, um, then the transitions and then we. On the, um, um, su- support, um, and challenges, uh, goal one is that eighty percent of the students will be proficient. By teaching, uh, seventy percent mastery in each, uh, essential standard. And so this, this is our, our focus for the coming year and that we, we all, um. Want our teachers to, to help our stu- I know they are, are helping our students, but we encourage them more, you know, and. Make, uh, make, um, teachers, uh, make it a fun, uh, day for the kids so they, they love to go to school each day. And, uh, I know my grand, my granddaughter's over at the intermediate and she likes going to school and she talks about what, um. What, uh, they do and during the day and at the autumn class and stuff like that, you know, um. And so, and I just want, um, our teachers, um, I, I've said it before about our. To make sure that, to let the parents know, not at the parent meeting, but before. If their child is not doing well, to be sure and let them know ahead of time. And I would like to know about, about my child, if it's doing, not doing right, I would like to know right away so we can focus on, on. What she needs to, to do to, in her class. And, um, then our, our concern, my concern is about, uh, the credits at the high school. And, um, it, um, the counselors need to be, uh, meet with the, uh, freshmen. I don't know how many credits they need in their freshman year and then the sophomore, junior, senior. So they don't, they don't need to be doing the credit recovery at the last minute. It seems that we've been doing that for, for so many years and we need to, we need to stop that. And, um, and so I hope, um, that, um. That they do that at the high school. And, uh, I know the students all like to learn, but, um, but they need to, to know. How many cred- I think twenty-two is credit needed to graduate. They need to, uh, really work on that at the high school. And. I mean, all, all our classes need to, to, to do that. So they meet, reading at the level that they're supposed to read and the math and. And things like that. So, and also I'd just like to, um, um. Welcome the staff back to our new school year. And all our staff, support staff, our bus drivers and. Uh, maintenance, technology and groundskeeping and, um, kitchen staff. And all our teachers, principals, counselors, superintendent. I'd just like to thank all of you and, uh. And, uh, I know, um, we also have some, uh, uh, business, no. Business office and, um, personnel and Ms. Pedigree, you know, thank you for, for being here for our students. And, um, thank you all for, for everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ella.
Unless there's any other reports or any other comments, I think we can move on. I didn't have anything for this evening, but I definitely will make sure to include and work on my written reports for the board. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to the Barbecue and Rice School District Superintendent's report.
President Wadia, members of the board and members of the team in the community present. First of all, I want to formally welcome every, everyone on the new school year. This is our first official meeting for the new school year. And at the same time, I wanna thank every single new staff member that have chosen Barbecue and Rice High School District to be part of their career. I wanna thank our continuing staff members for being loyal and continue to serve the community. I wanna thank those members of the team who have, who are no longer gonna be part of our team, but they have chosen to continue to serve children in other parts. But I wanna thank them for the time that we're serving us. I also wanna think, take a moment to thank our district ELA and math coaches for putting together the summer school curriculum. It was very focused and very strategic to ensure to meet the needs of all the summer schools, students that participated. I wanna thank the principals and their staff for nominating the students that could benefit the most by participating in the summer school. And I also wanna thank our coordinators and our summer school teachers for stepping up. It was a very challenging summer to be able to recruit and not only teachers, but also administrators to give out the summer and also there was a lot of training going on, professional development and conferences going on and trying to orchestrate everything and to be able to manage it. I wanna thank you all. Having said that, as part of my report, I wanna bring to the attention the, if you don't mind pulling out the strategic plan, the strategic plan. The first one, that one. I wanna bring to your attention what this is. Based on the retreat and based on the conversation, this is the updated version. Right now, I'm going to go over what was added because this, this document is what's gonna help us ground the items that we can be reinforcing. But most importantly, that is gonna be the golden nuggets or the, or the opportunities for all of us to focus on. I, I will need this one right now as part of my report to be reviewed because it's gonna come back again shortly as an action item. A lot of it you have already gone over, but based on our retreat, I just wanna point out the specific areas that we added so that we can work on them. On the first section, it is nothing new. Every single of those area, all the areas are number one. We are familiar one on the second, which is attendance. We have, the only thing we have added is stretch two B, which is ninety percent of the families will have access to the portal. And we're gonna provide our energy to ensure our parents, as part of staying connected, to meet that particular goal. Underneath each one of these sections, you'll be able to see what are some evidence that we will be able to provide, either through our principal report, superintendent report. In this section, if you go down just a little bit where it says adopted, those are the two areas. As part of the state connected, we are adopting the JET programs and continue the work the superintendent Sudan has started and which is gonna continue that work with now Ms. Edna and also the working along with the Toronto Autumn Department of Education volunteers that we have been collaborating. Those are two areas that will be now new as part of the evidence. Moving along in the next page. There's two essentials that we have added. Instead of essential eight, it's essential ten. Ooh, I need to update that. But if you see one through ten, the last two, it is making connections and also coaching across the board. And if you scroll down a little bit more, Mr. Bates, there are four, five new pieces of evidence that we can use as part of evidence that will show that we're heading that direction, including the parent portal, the forums, parent workshops, social media activity, and community planning days. Moving along, the next one in the next area. In here, the goal is still the same, supporting challenge across the board. But if you scroll down, how are we gonna know that we are fulfilling this particular section? It's gonna be through beyond text and your aligned benchmarks, board reports, breakthrough challenge, data dives that we'll be presenting and going through this year and also walk through data. In the next section, nothing has changed, nothing to report on that one. And except, sorry, if you could scroll down a little bit. The only difference is the evidence that we also can use to provide that we head in the right direction and bringing clarity in the areas that bring us great opportunity, which is beyond textbooks, which is that last bullet, adopted summer 2023. And if you continue to go on, the next two is once again breakthrough challenge, which we're gonna go through I L T this year and also classroom visit data. Having said that, we also included all, all of the three-year plans for the public and that we can show that not only this is a plan, but also we are aligned and purposeful in every single area. Having said that, now, are there any last questions before we close back during an action, action item in the next section?
Questions, comments, concerns, support?
And if not, any questions? I can show the video to show some highlights about the month of June.
I had a, go ahead, you can do your video, but I'm just not sure if I can, I should ask it here, but I'll think about it.
Alright. I also wanna thank Ms. Sudan for helping us coin our motto for this year and begin the publicity. So thank you, Ms. Sudan, for your support on that one. I really, 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 really like it. Also, as part of the report, may I please now have Justin Frager, our coordinator for summer school? He has to meet his reporting writing and will be presenting also his video. And don't blink, cuz it goes super fast.
So, so I just did a video and I did a short and sweet video because that's just my style. But I really enjoyed the opportunity to be the coordinator for summer school. It was a real honor and a real pleasure. And I wanna publicly, publicly acknowledge Mr. Fox and Mr. Diaz for your mentorship and your support. There were some days where I was calling up Ruben like, what did I get myself into? And he's, you'll be fine. You'll be fine. You're doing just fine. And so I really appreciate that. I have this video showcasing the pre and post tests, like I stated earlier. And if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them after the video. Does anybody have any questions?
I blinked.
Couldn't have done that.
I don't, I don't have any questions, but I, you know, when you're highlighting those types of tests, I think you should slow it down a little so we can all appreciate and see because it looked really good. I think you should slow it down a little so we can all appreciate and see because it looked really good. But thank you for everything that you've done for, for the summer for the kids. I think one of the things that parents, I guess, concerns, and, and this is from when we did meet with, with the high school parents with regards to the upcoming travel. I think that, I think that the community needs to understand or hopefully think about when we make decisions as a board, say for instance, to increase the grades and, and like what we have, the three-year plans. Their parents need to be really supportive of that as well because this, because you're doing everything you can. The teachers are doing everything they can. But when the students hear that it's, they don't have to achieve that high standard, then it kind of stunts that, their growth. And I think that the more we put out that they're capable and even in just these three weeks of summer school, you can see that with the highlights there, that they, they can do it. They can really be successful and continue to, to, to move forward with that. With the, what do we have, our 25% increase, you know, things like that, that they, they have what it takes to do that. But we really need our community, our parents to, to know that, that our, that we see that in the students and they should see that as well and to continue to be supportive and, and know that, my gosh, there's, there's just so much that our students are capable of. And don't put it, don't stunt that growth because it's, it's, it's just going to be amazing to see what's going to happen if you just keep supporting and telling our kids that they have it in them. So thank you for everything.
You're welcome. I, I agree with you. You know, even as a teacher during the school year, I've got 19, 20 kids and I have to sit some of them down and say, look, you can do this. Don't tell me you can't do this. And they said, what are you talking about? I said, I have all your work. Let me show you what you can do. And they sometimes need that reminder that, hey, I can do this. And then when I talk to the parents, because they know I'm going to talk to the parents and I tell them, look at what your kid is doing. Look at these little gains that mean a lot, especially in the world of special education. You know, it's, it's huge. And then to see these, I mean, I almost was in tears, to be very honest with you, because in three weeks, 15 days, these kids knocked it out of the park, literally. And to show these parents that they can do it and that they are capable if they have that guidance and mentorship. And, you know, I couldn't do any of this without the teachers. The teachers did an excellent job. I was in their classrooms more than they probably wanted me to. But I was so excited to see what they were doing, seeing the kids excel. And not only the teachers, but the coaches coordinating the curriculum also made a difference. And I just really hope that the parents, students and the families see that they can continue to just go up from here. So thank you for pointing that out. Anything else from the board? Mr. Frago?
Awesome, Mark. Thank you, sir. It was definitely something to take in.
Thank you.
And at this point, may I please have Ms. Dr. Forrest Ali to come forward? We will have her video also to be shown.
You have a chance to read my report and I have a video that, that will explain exactly what it shows or what's written in the documents. Session two is still ongoing and we're going to end this week, July 14th. If you have any questions, just let me know. Thank you.
In your report, you also identified grades. They were pretty good.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, they're, they're As and Bs. I was really happy with that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And also your percentages on your attendance rates. That's what I'm hoping will look like this. Your overall was a 91.
Yeah, I keep track on the attendance every week. So trying to call the parents and make a robocall every weekend so they can come to school, making sure that they will come and attend and get the credits that they deserve.
I, I just want to say, and I think it's important to really acknowledge, I know Mr. Frago left, but I think that the effort and, and we've always, I know we have always been able to observe and see, but I really want to say thank you for taking on something like this because I know that summer times are usually precious for everybody in the sense that, you know, it's kind of break time or it's kind of, you know, I don't have anything to do, but, and I know for a little while there, we were a little like, no one's really trying to offer to help put this together. So thank you. Thank you for doing that. And then thank you to all of the staff and everyone else who participated in, in, in making this a success. It truly, truly, truly is something that I feel like each one of these board members, and I know it's been brought up on a different, bunch of different occasions. And I don't, I don't want to say that there's any reason for it other than that. People just need to understand that anything that we do really does impact, not just, it's not like we sit here and make decisions that aren't going to also impact our own kids, our own nephews, our own nieces, our own, everybody else that's, that's related within this community. It bears a responsibility on us to, to, to be the bold person and say, education is important. We're going to set the bar a little bit higher. So thank you for giving them a little bit of a step up during the summer. And we definitely appreciate that from all, from all of our staff and all of the directors and everyone else that helps to make that a reality. So thank you.
It's my pleasure, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Bates, my battery is dying over here.
Oh, here.
Okay.
President Mondi?
I just had a question because it had come up and I didn't see a, a transportation report in here. So I was hoping you might be able to help respond to some of the questions or the concerns about the transportation form. And this was brought up that, and, and again, these are just what is told to us. I'm hopeful we can respond now into the public that the form that's being requested to be filled out, here's what, here was what the question was. I'm being told if I don't fill out this form, I'm going to be denied transportation or I'm not going to be able to get on the bus or this is the reason. So I really, really, really hope that's not what we're telling anybody. And that, yes, this form is important, but I don't see there being any effort from transportation to make that effort. It's being put on others to make that effort forward. So I, I was hoping there was a report in here, but I don't see one. So I don't know if you have a response to that, Mr. Diaz? Or if there's something that we need to be mindful of? But I'm sure that it's not the only concern. And that's the only one that's come to me when this meeting was coming was, why are we being told that we'll be turned away if we're not going to fill out this form? I said, I don't know, but I can ask. So I'll give it to you.
Thank you, President Mondi. If you give me the opportunity to take a closer look at what the concern is, and I'll be more than happy to respond. Let me see. Devora? I can also ask Ms. Devora if you have any knowledge. But more than anything, if you can allow me and give you the opportunity to look into this matter and find out and come back with an answer.
Sure. I just know we're really getting close to the beginning of the school year. And if that's an effort that we need to make as a school district, then I don't know where transportation falls into that form of what it is. then I don't know where transportation falls into that form of, what is this form? And when was it introduced? And why are we getting calls to say, I'm being told I won't be let on the bus if this is what happens, so?
I'll be happy to look into it, President Mondi.
Thank you. I think that was the only question I had, because I didn't see your transportation report, so that was why I was hoping.
I'll be happy to follow up on that. Going back to summer school, may I make a comment as well?
Sure.
Congratulations, first of all, I want to congratulate not only to the coordinators, but also the parents for making that big effort and a big difference. I also want to acknowledge that the majority of the students that were participating, they're the students that were recommended by the school leadership, and they were mostly also eleventh graders. So, the, the, the number of courses that we've seen completed, it's a step towards, a step closer towards graduation. So, I'm very excited to see the results as well, and I want to celebrate along with everyone, and thank the governing board to continue to support not only summer school, but also creative recovery during the school year, thank you.
Thank you so much, are there any other questions to the pertaining to this report? Item, comments, concerns, if not? Letter F is our action items, number one, discussion and possible approval of to adopt the barbecue and rice goodness check, annual expenditure budget for fiscal year twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four, Superintendent Diaz or Ms. Ravico?
Hello, I really don't have anything else to present, because it's the same as the adopted budget, so I guess we're just requesting that the budget be adopted for fiscal year twenty-four.
Are there any questions, if not?
I'm going to make the motion, I have no questions, so.
Motion by Ms. Sylvia Hendricks, I'm here, there's a second. Second by Ms. Kathleen Vance. Mostapo.
Mostapo.
Thank you, number two is our, thank you, Ms. Ravico. Number two is our discussion and possible approval of the barbecue and rice goodness strategic plan. I think we've been pretty nailed down on this as much as we can, so I'll motion to approve. Seconded by Ms. Sylvia Hendricks. Mostapo.
Mostapo.
Thank you, number three, discussion and possible approval of the FY twenty-two-four liability and workers' compensation insurance. Mr. Diaz, anything you want, or Ms. Ravico?
Absolutely, President Mondi, Ms. Ravico?
Not if you guys don't have any questions, I don't have anything, I can read my memo if you guys.
That'll be fine, please, just for the record.
Sure. The item that we have up.
Erin, can you open the memo, please?
Is for the approval of the trust fiscal year twenty-four proposed rates for liability insurance and workers' compensation. Barbecue Reunified School District Forty has contracted with the trust since fiscal year two thousand and one, two thousand and two, and joined the Alliance for Workers' Compensation in two thousand and twelve. The trust is a co-op, uh, corporate, cooperative, is a cooperative available to school districts across the state of Arizona since it was established in nineteen eighty-six. The proposed rate for liability insurance for fiscal year twenty-four is an overall five point seven-six percent increase, or twenty thousand two hundred and five dollars from fiscal year twenty-three. The property value was increased from fourteen point fifty-two percent to sixteen point seventy-four percent as the trust felt our teacher housing is undervalued in their system as it stands. And they want to ensure that every district has accurate values and coverage to maintain the health of the pool. This increase trends related to our property coverage contribution, also raising it from fourteen point fifty-two percent and increasing to a sixteen point forty-seven percent increase. It also slightly increased our equipment breakdown coverage, as well as our overall grand total. The trust board will decide the amount of funds that will be returned to districts due to lack of claims. The Alliance Workers' Compensation coverage increase is a total estimated increase of eight hundred and forty-seven dollars from fiscal year twenty-three. It's, the administration recommends that the Barbecue Reunified School District Governing Board approve the proposed rates as presented.
Okay, are there any questions to the item? No questions without any objection, I'll motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sylvia Hendricks. Mostapo.
Mostapo.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ravico. Uh, number four is discussion and possible approval of a delegate and alternate to attend the ASBA Delegate Assembly on Saturday, September ninth, twenty-twenty-three in Scottsdale, Arizona. Mr. Sabala or Rubin, do you want to touch on it?
Mr. Sabala?
I'm on the legislative committee as a board of directors, so it would need to be. Just put Anna in there.
I, I, I.
Delegate Assembly is September ninth, on Saturday, so once the delegates and alternates are selected, I'll go ahead and inform ASBA, and then get you both to the extra, or whoever's there with the extra money to check out outside.
Ms. Sylvia's interested, she said. Are you okay?
How?
Any alternate interests? Ella? Okay, then I guess if without any objection, I'll motion for Ms. Sylvia Hendricks as the delegate and Ms. Kathleen Vance as the alternate, is there a second? Do you second? You want to second the motion? Second by Ms. Ellen Greiswood. Mostapo.
Mostapo.
Okay, uh, new number five is the approval of consultant. Ms. Hendricks, do you want to kind of go into your questions, and then I can follow your lead?
Well, I did, I did, um, well, one of the things that I did talk to Ruben about was that, and this is an example, is that there's a par form, but I, I strongly encourage that we include memos just to provide more information, you know, because there are questions and, and, um, my question, one and the other question was that the salary range was, the salary and wage was at forty-nine seventy-two, even though it says hourly salary, I assumed that that was what it was going to be, but according to you, Ruben, it's forty-nine seventy-two an hour, and I was also questioning what, how many hours is that, are we looking at? Where is this coming, what budget is this coming out of? But I know that Juan also had other concerns regarding this, which, you know, I, I, I also agree.
Yeah, and I, I just really, really, really want to strongly encourage that the effort in, in the support that this board has, and I think the, the confidence that we have in the CFO that we selected should, I just really want there to be consideration in the fact that, as it is and what we see now, and the length of time and the comfortability and the ability to be able to do as asked or what is expected, I, aside from what was just brought up, I agree a hundred percent, I think Personnel Action Form maybe doesn't fit the bill for, for a consulting fee, so to speak. So, I guess that would really be where I was asking for, maybe some more discussion, if it, if it need be with you personally between us and the board, if that's what you wish, to say, here's where I feel like I'm not, because I think that this gets presented, and it's like, well, what are we missing here? You know what I mean? So, if you want to speak.
Um, so it's not just, she does not just help myself, she helps in other areas of our district and administration and grants, the superintendent's office, and it's consulting, I guess we're having additional audits, and we want to make sure that we are going to be in compliance and have everything covered, and she has been additional guidance for departments and administration to make sure that we are going to be compliant and, and helping in getting ready for those audits and wrapping up the end of the year, so there has been additional work than there normally should be, and there is going to be. And so, it, it's, it is not just for my benefit that we are asking, you know, that she still helps us, and it's consulting, but she also helps us with journal entries, recommending where items get placed or moved, or where we can utilize more in, in certain areas or fundings, so it's, I guess it's more than just consulting that, you know, she has been able to help us with and guide us. So, it, I guess it was just pretty much figured, not explained enough in the memo or the par in the description on, on all the areas that she does help us with, not just the area of the CFO.
Right.
Yeah.
So, that paints a whole different picture. Let's see, what's presented tells a different story, and at least in the, in the perception of an individual receiving the information.
Understood.
So, go ahead, Ms. Sylvia.
And it's, her, her hourly rate is, her rate of, you know, what she hourly, the breakdown of what she was making when she did move on, but her hours, never any more than twenty hours of pay period, so ten hours a week sometimes. Um, it just varies on the needs of the district, or how, you know, we contact her, email her, and she works after hours.
And, and here's what I don't want to be misinterpreted or misunderstood, is I guarantee Ms. Carla will be more than happy, and is more than happy to help. But I feel like respectfully, and I mean that, and mean that, is that at some point, we got to cut the cord a little bit.
Yes.
And do as we need to as a district, and you feel very confident, so if there's an instance that we need to be more supportive or understand what are we missing, or what is it to do, so that we're not incurring, basically paying someone else to help put those things into place where we should already have the individuals that we feel confident in who know what they're doing, that we already have on payroll. That's just my thought and what I want to say, and any disrespect to anybody, I just want to make sure that.
I believe it's not so much confidence in the work, but the workload that we do have, that she is helping and assisting us with, that has come upon us because of all the audits and upcoming audits, it's a larger workload. So, she has been able to assist with that, so it's not, I feel not so much in confidence in that we don't know, or we're asking her what to do.
Yeah.
It's her helping us get the workload done.
Okay, so that says a whole other thing to me, but go ahead, Ms. Sylvia.
Yeah.
And in regards to the audits, I guess you're saying there's additional audits, is that the result of what our audit was? You know, this past year or whatever, is that?
No.
The result of that, is that why we're having one?
So, the auditor general, they randomly pick districts to audit, we are one of them this year, or this coming up year. So, that is why, also, I think, I believe, was it spending or expenditures? When they look at district spending, that's one of them, so it's just, it doesn't have to do with our audit that was done, our regular fiscal audit, that was not anything to do with it.
So, so the last comment, oh, sorry.
Oh, so, yeah, and I agree with, and I think this is kind of the, I think we, we also have to have to deal with the, with the issue with the J-TED in that we are trying to break the cord and making sure that there is somebody that is actually on campus overseeing that, those programs. With additional programs that are going to be added, there really should be somebody on, onsite. But for this instance, with your explanation, and yes, I think at some point, you know, it, it really will really need to look at cutting the cord, I guess.
My, my, my last thing before you, before you comment is, I, I really want to be able to say that if we're tasking you as the new superintendent to give us a gauge, an adequately gauge, where and what is needed within your operation to be able to really meet the need of not only the business office, but the entire school district, and that really needs to be brought forward and told to us, because I, this is the first time that I'm hearing that you're, that you have overload, and I'm not saying that it's a bad thing, or it's that it, that it's of concern, but we're here to support, and if we're going to have that mutual understanding between us, you, and, and your, and everybody else, I would hope that we could have that conversation before it's presented in a way that's kind of like, not, I don't think it's bad, but I want to be sure that we're asking the right questions to say, okay, what, what do we miss then? Because, you know, we want you guys to feel confident and secure and all of those good things. And I'm sure the consultant that we're asking of is very understanding of what the mechanisms and the operations and all of those things here, but is also responsible for doing that elsewhere. And I just, that's just, I just want to bring that up, I just want, at least it's, at least it's said, and, and we, and I, and we go from there. Mr. Diaz?
Yeah, and governing board members, a couple of comments, and number, number one, I have, based on our conversations, I do, I did make a comment in our directing, also banned, moving forward, all PR, all pars need to have the memo, that way they can help answer, so no part will be uploaded without the memo explaining the purpose and also the funding. Number two, we do need regularly to address what are the concerns in, in the finance world, and one of the questions is what support is needed, and one of the supports that my department is asking is, I need additional support to address this. So, as we approach this coming year, this is one of the supports that my, my team has brought up to me, it says, I will need this support, even though I had this support this year, based on the workload that is coming up, this is the support that I need to be successful. Having said that, I will, I was, and, and I am supporting this memo moving forward, based on the, the support that my team is requesting.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Ms. Ella.
Uh, I know Ms. Carla was approved for these services before, I mean, soon after she, she left, and I know she's very knowledgeable, knowledgeable in this, the work that she was doing, and I hated her, to leave, her to leave. But, and I'm not sure what the rate was before, is there an increase in the same? And, and you're saying she works like ten hours a week? And as, and as I have, I have no question on that, so there's need, I know she's an expert in everything that, and I'm sure all the answers that she's asked, or she helps correct them, and I know when she left, we had, our audit was really clean, you know, when she left, and I'm not sure how it is now until, until we get the report. was really a clean, you know, when, when she left, and, uh, I'm not sure how it is now until, until we get the report. And, and, uh, and she's really good at NTAC eight, I know she's really good at that, so um, she knows, um, everything, and she's an expert. That's all I have to say, thank you.
I, 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 and I don't deny, and I would never deny, the knowledge and the experience and the understanding Ms. Carla has, my concern though is simply, I guess it wa- it should be presented, and is there, was there a procurement process actually followed, if there's, if there's, what is the, where are we gauging the threshold and, and the amount of times if it's ten hours a week, or if it's as needed, then what is that actual, this is, doesn't say that, so that's where I guess the concern comes from, and did we follow the process to look for a consultant and go through that, so we're not deemed? And how much are we dedicating towards this type of assistance? Based, or, or are we looking to find a permanent solution for some of these needs? And how are we, how are we seeking whatever, you know, whatever's needed in order to not have to have to, but that's, I mean, you know, I, I, it's a question, and I, again, I'm not, would never question the intelligence or the knowledge or the experience, I just think it's presented in a way as if she's still employed here. As far as I know, she's not, other than this, and I agree, we did, I know, I remember we did approve prior, um, but I don't know if this would just also offset anyone else who wants to consult, am I gonna be paid forty-nine seventy-two an hour for consulting? If that was the case, you know, how do we gauge that? I don't know. Anything, Ms. Vance?
Um, I do, I do agree with both that we need help here, I do agree that at some point that shouldn't be necessary, um, so I think that, um, also the way it was presented has a lot to do with the questions that are being asked now, so, and, uh, moving forward, that's gonna change, um. I think that if, if that memo had mentioned a lot of those things, that would have, you know, it wouldn't have been, uh, an issue, but, um, I, I agree with both sides that we do need that, if, uh, that's what is necessary now, but at some point it, it shouldn't be, um, so that also leads into, um, some kind of, um, additional training, additional support for, for your office, um, Ms. Rabago, um, because it's gonna continue and we're gonna, like was mentioned with the additional funds that are coming through and, and as Ella mentioned, you know, the, um, the audits that we've had were, the findings were very little, and we wanna continue with that, so you know, it's, I think it's gonna work out, it's just, this had to happen, the discussion, so, it's good.
Okay. Anything else?
No, um, so, I guess with the discussion and the answers that we had to our questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
I have a motion to approve by Ms. Sylvia Hendricks, I'll second. With the directive that these need to be, have improper information memos before approving any of the other ones going forward. Is that okay?
How?
Any? I did, I seconded. Yeah. Mosapo.
Mosapo.
All right. Letter G, second sent agenda without objection, I'll motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Sylvia Hendricks. Mosapo.
Mosapo.
Thank you, letter H is our request for future agenda items. Can I make one little? Remember, we had asked, I believe in April or May about, um, information being provided on Mr. Roloff's, uh, retro for the work that was being conducted, which increased his pay only recently.
Uh-huh.
And I didn't get any information or anything further from that.
Um.
Not that I'm aware. If it can be adjusted in the future agenda, then.
Okay, we do have, uh, we have acted on it, but we'll be more than happy to report on that.
Okay, Ms. Sylvia?
Yeah, I was wondering, I thought that, because I know that he was on vacation, IT, and they were gonna do a presentation under
IT still, oh, no.
Funders.
Yeah, IT, there are two departments that they still need to present, we'll be, we can put him on the next agenda item, if you're okay with it.
Should've did it tonight.
Huh?
Just kidding. Should've did it.
I can.
Is there anything else for future agenda items? Ella? Go ahead, burning agenda item, you wanna feature agenda item? No?
And?
You wanna give me a rating?
Yeah.
No.
Agenda and President Mudiya?
Um, if, if not, I was, I was, and I meant to address this, so maybe Ben and you and I could probably sit and then present. I would like for this board, if possible, to support, uh, a resolve or a resolution, because remember we were having that discussion about the prioritization of education of the, of teachers or, uh, that it's, doesn't, everybody puts like doctors and police, but we don't have teachers as an essential employee of the nation, and I think if we can present something, that maybe the nation would also make that recognition.
Okay.
So that when we're.
But I think, yeah, I mean, that's good, yeah, because then it would benefit all teachers, I mean, we have other schools here on the reservation.
And I, and I'm sure.
Including the college, you know? Yeah, head start, yeah.
Because I don't think they get the prop, I mean, I know, we, we know they don't get the proper recognition when it comes to being an essential employee or an essential need, and so whenever there's funding or something to divvy up, please consider that education, uh, is, is definitely at that, that top priority. So I don't know if that's something we could present to some, in some way, and then. Because as you're, as you're meeting with HRDC or anything, say, hey, my board just approved and asked if you all would also
Support.
take a hand in supporting, recognizing as essential employees or essential workers, or teachers.
I really like that.
Okay. It would also help in the housing fight. Anything else, Ms. Vance? What's your item? Go ahead, girl. Ms. Sylvia?
I gave it to him.
Okay.
You guys.
Yeah, you just sent an invite, but he had already done an invite too.
Did he? My calendar, yeah, it's going on, anyway, we'll look into it, but it's August twelfth, it'll be eight AM, once they shoot the agenda out, I'll email you the agenda. Um, other than that, September, I'll be on travel and won't be here for the board.
Ooh, denied.
Denied.
Hold those in favor.
So, would you like somebody to be here for that? I can offer, give somebody from the office too, I don't know if it'll complicate things or make things better.
Is that something you could handle, or?
We'll manage.
Yeah.
We'll manage.
Without you, Ben.
We'll manage. We'll manage.
We, we can manage, I think we'll be all right, Ben.
We've done. And also facilities walkthrough, um, possible days.
Facilities walkthrough?
Yeah, the facilities tour, um.
Next Thursday?
Um, we're gonna do it this Thursday, um, however, some of the schools are not ready to have you, they wanna an extension, so, um, we're gonna postpone it for next week, so what I, what I know is, um, new teacher induction is this week, but I wanna know, um, yeah, uh, this Thursday, but I wanna know what days are you available, so we can share the school readiness to reopen.
Next week?
Next week. Take a deep breath.
The date?
Um, either Thursday or Friday.
I'll be here.
I'll come by, but, um, after the, by eight thirty.
That is short. And it will be half a day if you can, so you can tour all four schools.
Okay.
Or facilities walkthrough.
I, I just can't do.
Either Thursday or Friday.
I just can't do Monday next week, but that's it. For me. What day you'll get with? I can't do Monday, but that's, yeah.
You said, you said Thursday.
Thursday or Friday will work.
Well, Thursday or Friday. If anything, Friday would be super, uh, yeah, actually, yeah, Friday's perfect.
Friday, Friday, Friday?
Friday morning?
Friday, from May to twelve?
Friday? In the morning.
Friday, the twenty-first?
See, see Adam.
Friday?
See Adam. Just kidding.
Thank you for your support.
Are we gonna get a new schedule for like campus visits?
Yes.
Okay, you're gonna send that out? The whole?
Mm-hmm, yes, you'll get it.
Wrestle for who's gonna go? Yeah. I don't, I mean, I, I just said if no one else, then I, I would, I would like to go.
Well, it's in September, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and you, and you have the leadership, I can only do one.
Okay.
I'm already signed up for the leadership, I mean, the law conference.
You wanna go? You're okay?
The NAFSA?
Yeah.
No, I'm okay.
Okay.
One more thing. Um, I need to publicly, um, thank and acknowledge the Sales District, um, one of our goal is to continue to, uh, provide opportunities for students to practice, um, advocacy and empowerment, um, the Sales District has uh, um, approved to send two students and chaperones as well, so I wanna, please help me thank Sales District for their support by giving them a big hand. Thank you.
They're gonna go with the NAFSA script.
Yes, they'll have the opportunity to see what advocacy firsthand, as well as visit the Capitol and, and bring back what they learned.
Turn your mic on, there you go. No, oh, it died.
So if that's the case, um, the, the law conference, I really, I really think that this new year, we should start including our students, um, for these travels that we're going to, um, like Johnson O'Malley has been also a really big support in, in funding our students, um, and I really believe that that's something, because you had mentioned, um, at one point, Ruben, about, um, making sure our kids are at a level where they can defend the land rights, the water rights, all of those things that are gonna be coming forth at some point in their lives, so I really do believe that we should start sending, um, our kids to the conferences that we go to.
Thank you, and one of the great news is that our district has been very active requesting, uh, JRM funding, that we have exhausted the funding. So that's why when they knock at the Sales District door, it says, I need help, and they came through, so more, more than likely, we will be, uh, continue to ask any agency, um, in other districts to be able to now support since, uh, Sales Districts have demonstrated, um, exemplary support, um, and open the door for other districts as well.
You know, what would be good is, is you're visiting the districts, maybe even introduce that, and ask them what their process might be, the other thing I was thinking is to, oh, what Johnson O'Malley's under education on, yeah, I guess, like, well, I, I, if anything, maybe earmarking some degree, at least a student in the new fiscal year.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sylvia Hendricks.
Thank you, everyone, for your support, team, make sure you get some food, everyone have a great night, thank you.
All right, we are adjourned, it's eight thirty-two PM.